Good evening. It's another beautiful evening in Pueblo, Colorado. I'm calling to order the regular city council meeting. Today is Monday, July 22, 2024. The first item, we're going to have our invocation with Michael Atlas Akuna, the president of Temple Emmanuel. And if you would, you could stand with us. If you don't want to, don't. And right afterwards, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Our God and God of our ancestors, with mercy, accept our prayer on behalf of our country and its government. Pour out your blessings upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, its judges, officers and officials who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Help them understand the rules of justice you have decreed so that peace and security, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land. God, whose spirit is in our creators, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all the inhabitants of our land. Uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife, plant love and compassion ship, peace and friendship among the many peoples and faiths who dwell in our land. Grant us a knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and courage to root out poverty from our land. May it be your will that our land be a blessing to all who dwell on earth. And may you cause all peoples to dwell in friendship and freedom. Speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets. Nations shall not lift up sword against nation. Neither shall they learn war anymore, for all of them, from the least of them to the greatest, shall know me. And let us say amen.
Thank you so much. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mark Alef.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez.
Here.
Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sam Martinez. Excused.
And she is excused.
Thank you.
Uh, we now have special recognitions. The first one is a proclamation presentation for Chris Harner Day. Tuesday, July 23, 2024. Deputy Fire Chief Chris Harner.
This is a mayoral proclamation, Chris Harner Day, Tuesday, July 23, 2024. Whereas Chris Harner has been a dedicated employee to the city of Pueblo since July 23, 1990, when he was hired as a firefighter for the city of Pueblo. He has worked loyally and honorably for many chiefs throughout that time, serving the city for 34 years at the day of retirement. And whereas Chris has been a fire medic, emergency medical officer for the city, responding to calls on rescue unit one and three for the city of Pueblo as a paramedic, and provided the department with emergency medical training. And whereas Chris was promoted to the position of captain in August 2010, serving as a company officer, two months later filling the administration role as training captain for nearly six years. Through this, he provided instruction and training to the entire department. And whereas Chris was promoted to the position of assistant chief in August 2016, guiding and leading the 10 companies of B shift safely for four years. And whereas he was promoted to the position of deputy chief of operations in 2020, ensuring the safe and effective response of the fire department ever since. His service and knowledge will be greatly missed in the fire department. Now therefore, I Heather Graham, the mayor of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, by the authority invested in me, do hereby proclaim July 23, 2024 as Chris Harner Day. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank the citizens for this long career I've had at the city. It's been a joy. And thank you, Mayor Graham, for your leadership. And there's so many others to thank. Chief Huber. Thank you to my wife, who's put up with it. Um, she'll definitely miss the cell phone going off in the middle of the night, but she'll get over it. I just thank you, everybody. It's been a wonderful career. I'll miss working for the city.
And now we have a recognition presentation for the 2024-2025 Colorado State Fair Fiesta Queen in Court. Can you all come on up?
It's my, it's my honor to be able to present these certificate of recognition to the Fiesta Day Queens. I don't, uh, I'd like to always reiterate that the Fiesta Day is the biggest day at the Colorado State Fair. And, uh, you've always represented the community so well. And I'm really pleased that I'm being able to, to give you these recognitions. Uh, all of these read the same, so I want to go ahead and read the certificate of recognition. Presented to the 2024-2025 Colorado State Fair Fiesta Queen, Karina Ruiz Salcedo and her court, Brielle Baca, Alia Cruz, Dulce Valenzuela, Olandra Solis Ayala. So if you can all, uh, if you could hold that for, why don't I let you pass those out? I'm going to borrow these for just a second. Yours is. These certificates read as follows. The city of Pueblo would like to congratulate you and your court on this accomplishment of the 2024-2025 Colorado State Fair Fiesta Queen in Court. May you reign, your reign be successful, fulfilling, and may you continually serve as a representation of the Hispanic culture throughout the year. Signed by Mark Alef, President of the City Council, dated July 22, 2024. Ivan, would you like to come up and say a few words? Or Alicia?
Okay.
I want to just thank the community of Pueblo for recognizing these wonderful women. I'm so proud of them. And all they've done, um, our crowning took place on June 22, 2024. And then we're actually going to feature them at Noche de Fiesta on August 3 at the Pueblo Convention Center. So we're looking forward to that as well, but I'm super proud of you girls. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Dennis, Mayor Graham. Good to see you for this recognition. 2024 marks 57 years of Fiesta Day at the Colorado State Fair. Uh, we take a lot of pride in that, and these girls represent us so beautifully. They are the future, and if this is our future, the future is very bright. So Dennis, thank you for all you do for the Fiesta Committee. And we hope to see you all here. I know the city's got a table at Noche de Fiesta, August 3, Pueblo Convention Center. Had to get a plug in. Yes, and I'm sorry, we have our coordinator, Susan Worthos, that leads us, um, very strong coordinator. She's been our coordinator for three years now? Four. Awesome job. And my wife, thank you so much for putting up with all the absence, and, and the hecticness that the Fiesta Committee brings to our life. And we have Alicia Ledoux Garcia. She's the co-chair, pageant co-chair, right? And a big help for everybody. And I think we have Karina's mom here, right? Uh, but thank you. Thank you, City of Pueblo, for everything.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
So very much.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move into public forum. We're going to start with Zoom. Kathy Nichols.
I'm here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Um, I want to apologize upfront because I'm reading what I want to say tonight, just to stay in the time limit. Um, good evening, City Council, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kathy Nichols, and I am a longtime resident of Pueblo. I'm coming today with a heavy heart because it appears to me that we have created a war on the homeless in our community. I'm going to give you a few examples over just the last three weeks. The first example is where a man was beaten up by a group of kids. A woman intervened, and the man was severely hurt. She called the police. The kids ran away. The man ran behind the building. When the police got there, the man would not come out to get medical care because he is afraid of the police, because he told her, they will take me to jail and tear up my home. By the way, those kids were picked up. The youngest child was nine years old, and they had a gun. The police officer was sad. He's a veteran cop, and he made this statement, he made the statement that he will lose his job before he tears up a camp. So what's that going to do to the staffing issues we have at the police department? Unlike what I was told by one city councillor, this is not an issue of the police department needing to clean up their image. It's an issue of the police department happy to do things that you pass in ordinances. Next example, my friend was going into the store the other day when it was over 100 degrees. She saw some homeless people, decided they must be really thirsty. She went in and got them some cold drinks. No sooner did she come out of the store and started to pass out those drinks, and three cop cars were on her, three of them. She told them that no one had asked for anything. She was just giving them water. And their response was, well, they're just homeless people. The next thing I saw was a city employee posting pictures on social media of how they were doing cleanup behind the Walmart store. And in the next sentence, bragging about how once they were done, they were going to be tackling the encampment. The comments to that post were horrific. People are not at all being kind, and in fact, they're bordering on being vicious and dangerous. The last example I saw was a man following three buses that were going into Pueblo West at night. He was saying on the video, they're just homeless. They're bringing out homeless people. They're bringing immigrants. And there was a lot of comments about how we won't allow that Pueblo West. We'll get them out of here. Someone finally pointed out to them that the buses were teenagers coming in for a school tournament, a sports tournament. So my question is, what would have happened if those people who want to be self-proclaimed vigilantes had actually stopped that bus with guns and that bus is full of teenagers? My last example is that of a citizen who called because some homeless people were sitting in the grass over on Troy. They called their city councilman, who said, I'll take care of it. One hour later, the councilman called the citizen to say, I'm down here with the police, and we're making them move. My question on this one is twofold. Why, if they were just sitting, and where are they moving to? I guess it's threefold. Does the city council have some kind of priority for those calls? Because I sure couldn't get someone to come here in an hour. And most people couldn't because of the staffing issues that the police are dealing with. We are creating a culture that is war on the homeless. Like it or not, culture starts at the top. And for the city, that means city council. I'm asking you to pay attention to this. These examples are coming from the environment you're setting up with the ordinance or ordinances that you are passing. When citizens watch city council members talk with plea about how they could now not have to have a bed in a shelter in order to take someone's encampment down, our citizens feel empowered to also treat homeless like second-class citizens. I'm asking you to pay attention to the message you're sending and the words you use, because this is not right. Lastly, I will tell you what I believe. I always say, there but for the grace of God go I. And you know what? There but for the grace of God go every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we now move to Dave D'Amico. Hello, Dave.
Thanks, Clyde. So, um, again, the 30-year goal, I think, is to make Pueblo family friendly. And it is, our goal is not to reduce carbon dioxide. That might be somebody's goal, but it's not ours. So the first thing I want to say is solar net metering transfers electricity costs from well-to-do people to all of the other solar users that don't have, you know, rooftop solar. So that raises everyone's rate. Um, so California Sierra Club caused higher Colorado and Pueblo electricity rates. They came into town, they came into state, got the mandates, the fossil fuel mandates, uh, you know, installed, and then they came to Pueblo and got us to agree to a carbon dioxide-free thing, regardless of cost. There's not a, not a, and that statement in that pledge, you know, we need to, I think we need to repeal that, or whatever the word is, and restate that what we're interested in is lowered costs. And it might maybe make, you know, throw a bone to, uh, you know, the best we can renewable energy. So, um, what happened with Black Hills Energy, they built PAGS. Uh, when they had perfectly good Pueblo 5 and 6, maybe it's a little less efficient, it's a natural gas fired, and they had five 2-megawatt diesel engines. But because they're fossil fuel polluting, couldn't keep them and use them. They, you know, that's, so that's the example of spending capital money to, uh, increase their base of what they can charge money on. I think it's 9% they charge. So what should Pueblo Council do? I'd say revise the 2035 pledge. Decide what you want. You want lower costs or carbon free. Um, now start lobbying the state to remove the statewide mandates and remove the Pueblo from the statewide mandates, because, you know, we are home rule. And I think Ken mentioned that in his middle bullet on what can happen. Um, we need to enable Black Hills Energy. We have to lobby the puck to, um, allow us them to use the cheapest power available, maybe mandated. I almost, I didn't have the word force in here, but I changed it to enable. Um, uh, and we want to lobby XL to divest Comanche 2 and 3 to us. To us. So we can, we can, they can buy from, I don't know if it's municipal or co-op or an investor-owned utility that we, we, we have thing, but they, they have the distribution. So I would say form negotiating team to take Black Hills Energy off-ramp and for make changes to lower rates. So the negotiating team, you know, the mayor, president, couple of at-large councillors and citizens from each of the four districts. Um, remove, um, so here's what, here's the big one. You want like this one. Remove the Black Hills Energy franchise fee and/or city sales tax on electricity. That requires a lot of budget planning. Now, the issue there, of course, is this is a regressive tax. Every family, no matter their, their income, use it has, you know, one refrigerator, maybe a freezer. They have air conditioning, so it's regressive. And I just think that's an opportunity for us to actually lower the bills to the, to the citizens in, in the, in the city. Um, so there are other things that could be done, which would be to direct the planning department to have two electricity rights away on new developments, so that you can in the future have non-monopolistic delivery of distribution. Um, and also, uh, perhaps, you know, when developments are being laid out, we look at the solar value of the lots so that there is a south-facing rooftop that doesn't have penetrations on it. And we could direct regional building to advise architects and builders on, on solar rating. And, you know, don't put penetrations through the roof on the south side. Put them all on the north side. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Elvis Martinez.
Now, I'll start off a bit different. So since we all know what happened a bit over, oh, on the 13th, when Mr. Trump got shot, I think all of us should condemn those actions by that nutcase that did that. And all of us should get answers for protection for not only Mr. Trump or Mr. Biden, Ms. Harrison, anybody who has high-ranking official status like that, that is supposed to be protected by Secret Service and other law enforcement in those jurisdictions. Okay. I would like to ask all of you guys to reconsider your idea, your neighborhood ideas that were submitted several months ago. When most of the city councils, councillors voted it down, it was a huge slap in the face to the people you all serve and quote-unquote, "listen to." That's BS. This doesn't take away your power at all. For example, ARPA, I sat on one of the pillars, and some people in here probably sat on some of the pillars, with ideas that were brought forward to council members that were on there at that time, and they were approved, not ideas by city council members at all. So, and with the exception with Mr. Boston, because he wasn't on council, I'm pretty sure he has an opinion on that and would like to look at those too. That's just an opinion and everything. And I hope that Mr. Boston would bring that forward too, so he could look at those ideas and everything, and you guys could approve those because that's what the constituents want. Put your egos and party affiliations aside. And then, moving along to and, and just to include one of those ideas that were submitted and approved by the group. It, it was for a memorial bench for a young child who got shot and killed last year. So I hope you could sleep well at night when you guys voted that down. So how would you guys like to look those parents, that mother and father into the eye and say, well, we didn't vote for that idea because it was all bundled up, blah, blah, blah. And it was a Bloomberg idea, which, okay, he's a big-time Democrat, a multi-billionaire. I'm not a fan of his. But it was constituents that you guys served submitted those ideas. Bloomberg, he didn't submit any of those ideas. He probably never even been here to Pueblo. That I don't know. Moving along, N14 should be tabled for the, for good. And it makes no sense if it goes on the ballot in November and passes. For those who haven't read the agenda, that means whoever runs for mayor in the future would have to at least get 1,000 signatures, up to 1,200 signatures, which is 10 times more than it sits as of right now. And I, I did some homework. I called the city of Denver Day and, and the city of Springs. More doing your guys' homework. As of November 2023, for here, we had 72,000, 71,715 voters, which is down from 2021, which we had 72,624 voters. Denver, as of their last election last year, had 453,593 voters. And to get on the ballot for there, the candidates only need 300 signatures. Why we would need 1,000 makes no sense with our population, because less than 30,000 people vote in off-year elections. And then Springs needs 100 people to sign their petitions, and they have uh, just over 300,000 redshirt voters. So please make it make sense. And moving along, I have a minute left. With what's going to be read at the end of tonight with the ethics complaint against Mr. Flores, I think it should be totally dismissed because it doesn't make any sense what Mr. Nico claims about relationship and everything. Mr. Flores has already came forward and said that it is, that's his deceased wife's second cousin. And I'll just clarify in the Code of Ordinance, Section 1-9-20, Part 3, personal relationships means dating or any other intimate relationship beyond means friendship and excludes domestic partner or spouses. Part 3, relative means domestic partner and/or person related by blood marriage in-law. It doesn't go on steps by how long the in-laws is, but brother-in-law, father-in-law, mother-in-law, sister-in-law, like that, not second cousin-in-law. Step or adoption in any of the following degrees: parent, spouse, children, brothers, sisters, nephews, nieces, aunts, uncles, first cousins, grandparents and grandchildren. A divorce or separation between spouse shall not be deemed to determination and relationships described herein. So right there, it's, should be baseless because it does not fit what's right there, what I just read. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Petty. Hello, Ron. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me here. I, uh, went to the police meeting, uh, Thursday we had on the east side. And, um, I like to see the involvement that everybody's put forth. Mr. Latino, I haven't met you, but, uh, my wife has, Vicky Montoya, you, you know, from the east side. You all showed genuine, um, interest. Um, started before you became mayor, but it's really gotten a lot better since. Arlene Workman in code enforcement, you got a gem there. You got some very competent, um, positive people working in the city of Pueblo. I just moved here three years ago. And, um, it's really, it's really gotten better with more community involvement. Uh, Andrew Hayes in Public Works, uh, the guy's phenomenal. He comes out, he deals with people. Heather, you came out, met with my wife and, and, uh, Vicky, who, you know, Mr. Latino. This is great. I came here to thank you people and say, you're doing a good job. Another way I know you're doing a good job, I read the Denver Post hit piece on you guys. Okay, it kind of made me proud. Now, if we're doing something that somebody else isn't doing, but it's getting results and it's working, I think that's great. We're not Denver. We're not Boulder. We're not Fort Collins. I moved to Denver in 82 and from there went to the Springs in 97. I came down here in 2021. I hope I don't have to go to Walsenburg to try and get what I, what I'm after, which is just good moral rightness. We know right from wrong. Now, if we're not doing a particular tactic to, you know, sometimes just keeping somebody off the street long enough to get them sober, um, there's a lot of solutions to these problems. They're not easy ones. We're not going to probably find them on our own or just, you know, looking online. I'd like to offer, um, to start a task force on what we can do about the homelessness. Or as the Denver Post likes to call it, the unhoused. And it's not so much that they're unhoused or they're homeless. So much breaks my heart. I see the zombies walking around, what the drugs are doing to these people. I've talked to some of them. Some of them, they don't want to get off the street. This is what, this is their life. This is what they want to live. It's all that they know. Some of them, it's through heartbreak, through so many things that, that are outside of their control. Some things are inside of their control. But I'd like to thank you for stopping the needle program, because I think we all realize the behavior that you tolerate, and especially in force, you're going to get more of it. Okay? I'm seeing a lot less tents down by the river. That's great. Okay? We're, homelessness is not, it's not the problem. It's what the, the homeless do or think they're entitled to do. Um, we're losing so many homes on the east side through fires when it's Um, we're losing so many homes on the east side through fires. When it starts getting cold, they go inside. We've had fires even during the nice warm weather. I don't know if they're barbecuing, cooking, whatever, but it's the lawlessness. It's not the homelessness. Don't buy the hype that some people, it's, oh, there's a war on homeless. Well, there's a war on poverty. There has been and all that. So I think we do all need to keep the rhetoric down, but we know right from wrong. I don't want to talk politics ever again in this country. But we are facing a very big, I think, moment in this country's history. And it's, it's not left, right. It's not Democrat, Republican. It's right, it's wrong. Either something's right or something's wrong. The gray areas need to be smaller. We need to have compassion with our law enforcement. I think we do. The Pueblo Police, they've been great. Dealt with, uh, Roger Snyder. Um, we have all, all the liaisons from the Pueblo Police Department have been great, honestly. Every, every public employee has been great. So I want to say, keep up the good work. It's not going to be easy. And it's like, um, any Christian will tell you, when you, you won't get attacked unless you're doing something good. If you're not getting attacked by Satan, the devil, the evil ones, you're probably not doing really good. So keep in mind, you're going to be having a lot of slings and arrows your way. The Denver Post thing is one of them and just say, hey, I thank you very much, all of you. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Rob Grinstead. Hello, Rob. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to begin tonight by introducing myself. I'm Rob Grinstead. I was very active. I was in these chambers from nineteen ninety until two thousand and four. I was an elected official for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Number Twelve. The civic pride I'm going to boast on tonight is not in myself, but in members of the community in the city of Pueblo. I had a friend at the time, Dan DeRose, and he wanted the Pueblo version of, if I build it, they will come. So I had a resource that most people don't. I had access to three hundred qualified, trained electricians and linemen. We put the power in, the lighting, everything, pro bono up there at the university. That bled off into Runyon Park. So tonight I hope you take my comments in a, uh, uh, a feeling of civic, uh, pride in the community. My cause tonight, I have two of them. My short term is I need this council to give me some direction, tell me where to go. I've reached out to several people about this situation. The homeless obviously has been a topic tonight. My topic, what I do, what I've done this summer and last summer is hydration for the homeless. By myself, I'm able to freeze water, popsicles and ice bags. And since summer began, I am out every day hugging, holding, caring for people that most of us don't even want to look at. That's my choice. What I'm here tonight for is short-term. I'm doing this, and this is not a complaint, out of my own pocket. I need water, ice, Gatorade. I'm sure you can point me in a direction. I involve my children. I've never seen Facebook. They have plans to get me donations. Uh, I'm looking for a place to store them. And, uh, the whole idea is last, last summer when this started and it was a hundred and sixty degrees on the pavement, we had no cooling centers. Uh, I observed people in the fountain filling gallon jugs. I cautioned them, please don't drink it. They didn't. They went off into the bushes and gave themselves a bath. At that point, I said, I, I, I can't watch this anymore. I have to do something, but I'm one person. I take three cases of water, five days a week. The weekend before, when it was a hundred and five and a hundred and seven, I truly believe the little quart bags of ice that I gave those people might have stopped maybe a couple of ambulance runs from coming from heat stroke and heat hydration. I'm asking for compassion and mercy for the people that can't ask for themselves. My children got involved because they felt I was in danger to be with these people, day in, day out, out in the street with them. I don't feel threatened by these people. I know most of their names. I hug them, I hold them, I pray with them, I give them rosaries. I did, my children were able to point me to the, uh, Community Commission on Housing and Homeless with Sarah Martinez and Epigriego, and they also gave me a website for the resources of homeless for Pueblo. In everything I've touched and read, there's nothing in there about hydration. I'm not here to debate or argue the merits of the homeless or anything else. I'm simply asking, begging, if you will, for mercy and compassion to help me hydrate these people. The overall big problem, I've been out there with them. They were all aware of the Supreme Court. They brought it up to me. It's illegal for us to be homeless now. What does that mean in Pueblo? I've seen them get three hundred dollar loitering tickets that I couldn't pay. I don't know that that's the answer. I hope you don't take that as constructive criticism because I'm sure that as the elected leaders, you're doing everything within your purview to help these people. But what I see out there every day is a basic lack of hydration. I'm asking you to guide me, send me, help me, partnership with Parks and Rec for water, ice and Gatorade. Uh, I will continue. I will get donations, but I guess tonight, if you can point me in a direction, I was very active in this community proudly. I want to be active again. I've chosen my hill to die on is, uh, hydration for the homeless. I'm grateful for your time. Congratulations on your win, Madam Mayor. And thank you for hearing me tonight, Councilman.
Thank you. I have your, I have your phone number and I'll call you tomorrow.
Marco, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, Diane Dante.
Hello.
Hello.
How does this work? Is there a button? Oh, it's on there. Okay. So I, I am here because of Black Hills, having requested the PUC to approve an increase in the base electric rates, which would result in an average monthly bill increase for residential customers of about twenty dollars and twenty-three cents from one oh nine sixty-seven to a hundred twenty-nine and ninety cents per month for only six hundred kilowatts. And your cost will increase even more if you use more than six hundred kilowatts. There would also be an increase for small commercial customers of twenty-five dollars and six cents from two hundred fifty-one dollars, twenty cents to two hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-six cents. So I'm here to get people to make comments. So your comments matter. We would like all residents to comment on the PUC's online form on case number twenty-four AL dash zero two seven five E at the, at, at this scannable scan right here. And I have a bigger one. Your feedback is crucial in the process. We have supplied a paragraph for your comments in case you need it, but your unique perspective is what will make a difference. Um, everybody knows what's going on here. Um, and coming here and talking to the city council is helpful. But what is even more helpful is if everybody in the community goes online and protests to the PUC. Um, for, for like leadites that aren't real familiar with computer and how, how this system works, I, I did a eight, uh, number eight, uh, directions on how to do it. And the basics are that when it comes up, you want to click on the case number and you want to put the industry in there as well. It's going to ask you for your name and address. You just type it in. Here is the scan. So if anybody out there online wants to scan it, they can. Um, and I have here also the comments that you can make if you don't know what you really want to say. Um, just basically, I am deeply concerned and angry about the recent Black Hills energy increase my monthly electric bill of twenty dollars. I'm already paying forty-seven percent more than Colorado Springs and Denver. Also, the increase of twenty-five dollars and six cents to small commercial businesses will cost me more on my purchases. This is going to cost me more than twenty dollars per month. Also, you will bankrupt some of the businesses or they will leave Pueblo for cities with cheaper electric rates. These increased rates will also cause more unhoused residents, which we have too many already. We have had too many increases in the past. Is this what our future looks like? Increase after increase. So everybody, just please get out there and go online to the PUC and tell them how you feel. Thank you.
Could you do, hey, thank you. Could you do us a favor?
Mm-hmm.
And Haley is in the back there. Would you give her a copy of that?
Okay.
And I know I sent it to you, but I would suggest that, that I know it's hard to put it on the website, but maybe make a Facebook post with that after you look at it and, and it, and agree with all of it.
Can you send this back on? Hmm. Oh, okay. So, uh, it's out there on two Facebook pages that I know of. Um, actually three, on Canyon City Energy Future, on, uh, Rioca, um, web, uh, Facebook page, also on Bring Power Home Pueblo Facebook page. And I will be putting it on Rioca's website, uh, tomorrow. And then here is the one for the city. You just go to pueblo.us and you'll see trending links and then you scroll down to where it says Black Hills Public Comments and it'll take you right to the PUC.
We'll give that to Haley and we'll, uh, get it on our Facebook. And hopefully the rest of the community puts it on their Facebook. Uh, we now move into council member and mayor commentary. Uh, Mayor Graham.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Counselor Flores.
I'm passing this evening.
Counselor Meister.
Nothing, that, nothing this evening.
Counselor Gomez.
I'm good.
Uh, Counselor Latino.
I'm good too. So we're doing.
Uh, Brian, you had something you wanted to go over? I know she did very good at that.
She covered it. It was just go to pueblo.us and if you're on your, um, PC and not your phone, if you scroll down about halfway through the page, it says trending links and it's the very last link on it. Click on that. It can, it explains how to do all comments from written to electronic to phone. So pueblo.us and it'll take you there.
That's great news. That's great news. And I will say this, in the short time that we've been very vocal about, uh, this proposed increase, obviously what we've done is working because the PUC has reached out to the mayor and we're going to, going to set up community, uh, hearings and community meetings on the, on the, uh, proposed increase with the PUC who makes the decisions. So it means something. It's actually something that you can do as a community member, if you're against another eighteen percent rate hike, this is your opportunity to say something and to, to voice your displeasure. Cause you're going to get lots of other opportunities as we move through the next few months in person with the PUC. So uh, keep up the good work, Pueblo, because they're, they're listening to us and things are, are, are moving in our direction, I believe. So. Uh, Counselor Boston, did you have anything?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Uh, so I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you who came and spoke tonight, especially the repeat people. Um, you know, that was something that I did when I got involved. I just started coming to council and voicing my concerns and coming up with solutions. So I commend everybody for doing that tonight. And, uh, providing, you know, your concerns that you think will help benefit the community. Um, I would just like to preface, um, you know, the police, you know, they've been getting a lot of hate, uh, at that community meeting. A lot of people, you know, you guys are concerned. Obviously there's a lot of issues in this community, but I promise you the police are doing everything in their power they can to help the community. They're not trying to make anybody feel unsafe. Uh, they're not trying to break down relationships with the community. They're definitely doing their best to help move this community forward. So I would just like to, you know, extend my thanks to the chief and, you know, just tell everybody that things take time. So have your patience with the police and, uh, you know, try to have their back and try to help them if you can in any way. Um, what's the, to what the gentleman said earlier, um, right versus wrong is something that I stood behind a lot during my interview process. Uh, that was something that I thought uh, was very important that is getting lost in society these days. Too many people are focused on the wrong things, not really trying to focus on what's right versus wrong. So I'm glad to see other people with that mindset and, uh, appreciating the work that we're trying to do to help address some of the concerns that the community is voicing to us. Um, also, uh, thanks for showing us how to use that link to, on the website for the community to get involved. Um, it's going to take a group effort against Black Hills. So I, uh, encourage everybody to get involved, use that link, voice your concerns, attend the meetings, attend the hearings, uh, because your opinion does matter. Um, speaking up is how you get things done. So, uh, I think that's all I got.
Great. We now move to the review of the agenda. Page one. Page two. Madam Clerk, would you move M thirteen to the regular agenda? Page three.
Mr. President, we'd like to remove an item N twelve for further edits.
Page four.
Mr. President, we'd like to remove N fourteen for further edits.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. N twelve and N fourteen, um, removed from the agenda.
Removed.
Removed. And then Miss, uh, President Aleph had M thirteen as moved to the regular agenda.
Add what?
M thirteen. Is that correct? Yes, thank you.
Page five. And is there approval of the agenda?
Um, I make a motion to amend the agenda, moving M thirteen to the regular di- agenda. And, um, items N twelve and N fourteen. Removing them, removing them from the agenda.
Is there a second?
As distributed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Let's call for the vote. Pat passes six zero. We now move to the reading and approval of the minutes. Somebody want to give me a motion?
I, I make a motion.
Turn it off.
I make a motion to dispense with the reading and approve the amendments, uh, minutes of the regular meeting dated July eighth, twenty twenty-four is distributed.
Sarah, second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any comments? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, I see there's no communications. Item M resolutions.
M one, a resolution award construction contract, the amount of two million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars to Restgrading and Excavating LLC, setting forth four hundred six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for contingencies for project number twenty-four dash zero eight two WWANL one twenty twenty-four small main remove and replace project and authorizing purchasing agent to execute same. Item N two, a resolution awarding a construction contract, the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents to Nunes Construction, Inc., for project number twenty-four dash zero six eight, concrete improvements, West Twenty-Ninth Street, Phase Two, High Street to Will's Boulevard, setting forth seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents for contingencies and award, awarding, authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. And M three, a resolution awarding agreement for professional engineering services, the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars to Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineering, Inc. And Arizona Corporation for project number twenty-four dash zero three nine, design of West Side Trail, Wild Horse Trail, and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. And M four, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-nine cents with Item M four, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and forty-nine cents with Parker Excavating, Inc. For emergency sanitary sewer point repair at two oh six Broadway Avenue, project number twenty dash zero five-nine WWAN-O-three, approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M five, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents with K R Swedfiger Construction, Inc. For emergency sanitary sewer point repair at one zero zero one Lake Avenue for project number twenty dash zero five-nine WWAN-O-three, and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item N six, a resolution awarding a construction contract, the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty cents to Balance Concrete LLC for project number twenty-four dash zero eight-nine. Concrete improvements, Cambridge Avenue and Amherst Avenue, setting forth five thousand for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M seven, a resolution awarding construction contract, the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred nineteen dollars to Balance Concrete LLC for project number twenty-four dash zero nine-zero Concrete Improvements, Messiah Road and Hampton Lane in Court, setting forth five thousand for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M eight, a resolution ratifying PACOG's joint reappointment of Dennis Maroni to the Pueblo Conservancy District. Item M nine, a resolution ratifying PACOG's joint appointment of Jason Olds, the Electrical Board of Appeals Journeyman Position. Item M ten, a resolution ratifying PACOG's joint reappointment of Patrick Grove to the Mechanical Board of Appeals Journeyman Position. Item M eleven, a resolution authorizing issuance of a local parent REV twenty-four fifteen to the DSS of Pueblo uh, for the use of the public right of way along Clark Street from B Street to our southern terminus, adjacent to the Arkansas River Levy for the purpose of hosting Our Lady of Mount Caramels Annual Festival and procession from July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at eight AM through July fifteenth, twenty-four at five PM. Item M twelve, a resolution adopting new policies and procedures for research retrieval and copying of public records and criminal justice records. And ordinances, first presentation, item N one, an ordinance approving three main extension agreements between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the Board of Waterworks of Pueblo, Colorado, related to the extension of water mains to serve the cities through new fire stations and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreements. Item N two, an ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement and easement agreement by, in between the State of Colorado, acting by and through the Colorado State Fair Authority and the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation, relating to reconstruction and maintenance of the ADA ramp improvements at Mesa Avenue and Prairie Avenue, and authorizing the execution thereof by the mayor. Item N three, an ordinance vacating a portion of Mechanic Street and Richmond Avenue and portions of Twenty-Foot Alley and the Central Pueblo Subdivision, generally located west of Santa Fe Drive at the intersection of Mechanic Street and Richmond Avenue. Item N four, an ordinance approving the historic Arkansas Riverwalk Project, filing number four subdivision. Item N five, an ordinance approving and adopting the City of Pueblo Twenty Twenty-Four, Twenty Twenty-Five Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CBG and Home Investment Partnership Act Grant, Home, authorizing the mayor of the City of Pueblo to submit the application together with all the required and necessary certifications, assurances, and documentation to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and appropriating and budgeting CBG and home funds therefore. Item N six, an ordinance authorizing assignment of a private activity bond allocation from the City of Pueblo to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. Item N seven, an ordinance approving and accepting a Colorado resource for emergency and trauma education create grant, establishing project number PS twenty-four oh seven and for emergency and trauma education grant and budgeting and appropriating grant funds, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, which includes a ten percent cost match of twenty-five hundred dollars for the purposes authorized by the grant agreement. Item N eight, an ordinance amending chapters one and five of Title IX of the Pueblo Municipal Code to update and revise the business licensing application appeal process, amend the lodging facility licensing requirements, and provide penalties for violation thereof. Item M nine, an ordinance approving and accepting a grant agreement and applicable conditions pertaining thereto with the State of Colorado Department of Law, Peace Officer Standards and Training Post, establishing project number PS twenty-four oh six, budgeting and appropriating funds into project PS twenty-four oh six, authorizing Mayor Graham to execute same and ratifying her signature thereto. Item N ten, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement to the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the County Pueblo Political Subdivision of the State of Colorado, relating to the twenty twenty-four special municipal election. Item N eleven, an, an ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the City of Pueblo, Colorado, at the special municipal election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, a proposed amendment to the sections three dash five and five dash two of the Charter of the City of Pueblo, setting the maximum penalty for violation of the Charter and Pueblo Municipal Code and fixing the ballot title therefore. Item N thirteen, an ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the City of Pueblo, Colorado, at the special municipal election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, a proposed amendment to Article nineteen, recall of elected officers of the Charter of the City of Pueblo, and fixing the ballot title therefore.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, do we have an approval of the consent agenda?
I move to approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda, pass the ordinance of the consent agenda, setting the public hearings for August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and order the ordinances to be published by title.
Sarah, second. Got a second by Counsel Gomez. Any comment? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, we go to the regular agenda. Item M three, M thirteen?
Item M thirteen, a resolution in opposition to Black Hills Colorado Electric LLC's requests before the Colorado Public Utilities Commission to raise electrical rates within the City of Pueblo.
And do we have a staff report?
Carlos coming up.
I don't, I don't think there was a staff report prepared. I, I drafted the uh, resolution and would be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Would you do me a favor and read the resolution?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Bring it up. It'll take a moment.
Need to be Boy Scouts. Scouts. Always prepared.
Just like the Coast Guard.
Oh, Scouts. That's why I said Scouts.
What's this, N thirteen? M thirteen, thank you. Okay. I'll do my best impression of a city clerk now. A resolution in opposition to Black Hills Colorado Electric LLC's request before the Colorado Public Utilities Commission to raise electrical rates within the City of Pueblo. Whereas the City of Pueblo City and its residents are electric service customers of Black Hills Colorado Electric LLC, Black Hills. And whereas on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Black Hills filed a rate review with the Colorado Public Utilities Commission to update its electrical rate, electric rates to adjust for the rising cost of operating, maintaining, and upgrading its Southern Colorado Electric Systems, which serves over one hundred thousand customers in Pueblo, Canyon City, Rocky Ford, and surrounding communities. And whereas the city intends to intervene and fully participate in the rate increase before the PUC, and whereas Black Hills claims this rate increase will increase revenues by thirty-six million dollars annually, and whereas Black Hills claims the rate increase would increase the average monthly residential bill of a customer using six hundred kilowatt hours of energy from one hundred nine dollars and sixty-seven cents to one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Wow.
And whereas the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities reports that the typical Black Hills Energy customer already pays higher residential rates than those paid by a typical customer of any other utility in Colorado. And whereas a survey by the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities found that Black Hills customers on average spent over one hundred forty-five dollars to seven hundred kilowatt hours in January twenty twenty-four. And whereas during January twenty twenty-four, Excel rate payers spent less than one hundred dollars. Colorado Springs rate payers spent less than ninety-nine dollars. And Fort Collins rate payers spent less than eighty-four dollars for the same seven hundred kilowatt hours of energy. And whereas Pueblo rate payers have consistently been charged significantly higher utility rates than every other community along the Colorado Front Range. And whereas allowing Black Hills requested rate increase, requested rate increase to take effect would place an even greater economic burden on the city's rate payers than already exists. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Pueblo, that section one, the City Council of the City of Pueblo does hereby oppose the requested, requested rate increase for delivery of electricity for which Black Hills Electric of Colorado LLC has applied. Section two, a copy of this resolution be transmitted to all members of the Colorado Public Utilities Commission. Section three, the officers and staff of the city are authorized to perform any and all acts consistent with this resolution to effectuate the policies and procedures described therein. Section four, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passage and approval.
Thank you for that report and thank you for reading that. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any comments? I thought it was very important that we, we don't normally read those resolutions out, but I thought it was very important at this time to make sure that the community knows that we are steadfast. Hopefully, as a city council to uh, oppose this rate increase. Uh, this will be filed with a dissent and we want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. Uh, if there's no more, if there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Uh, Counsel Gomez.
Fort Collins, which were most comparable, I think, in reference to cities in Colorado. You're talking about almost forty-five dollars to fifty dollars difference a month?
Yes, at least forty-five dollars. Well, at most forty-five dollars for, now let me go back to that, at least forty-five dollars compared to Excel. Uh, forty-six dollars compared to Colorado Springs. Um, the difference between one hundred and forty-five and eighty-four, if you compare it to Fort Collins. Uh, for the same seven hundred kilowatt hours of energy. Significant more.
All right. Any other comments? Uh, let's, let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Uh, Madam Clerk, we're at Q one.
Item Q one, a resolution authorizing payment from the Council contingencies account in the twenty twenty-four General Fund Budget to Genealogy Society of Hispanic America, DBA Fre Angelico Chavez chapter in the amount of two thousand dollars to sponsor the annual conference on September twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four at Colorado State University, Pueblo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a staff report?
Yes, sir. Um, again, this is a request for two thousand dollars to support their annual conference at CSU Pueblo History in our own backyard. Um, they're expecting around two hundred and twenty people from the surrounding states in Colorado with a lot of activity in the community, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Sarah, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Have we sponsored this before or is this going to be the first?
Counsel Boston, go ahead.
No, we have not sponsored this before. This is the first time.
What is it again?
It is the Genealogical Society of Hispanic America. Um, it's their local chapter, but they're hosting their annual conference here on September twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth at CSU Pueblo.
Okay.
Counsel Gomez?
Is there any breakout of what that two thousand dollars is utilized for?
They don't go into detail, but I would assume it's to, for the logistics of the conference there, but I do not have an explanation for what the breakout is.
Uh, can, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make a comment. Th- this organization has been around for over fifty years. Uh, they've usually been housed at the Heritage Museum. And uh, uh, one of the, the ladies that I know personally, Charlene Sims uh, has utilized this as a base for people that are doing family, you know, their family trees. Uh, and uh, it, it's a wealth of knowledge and there's uh, this particular society is in many cities in the Southwest uh, that are developing uh, genealogical information much like a library would do. So uh, it's, uh, I'm assuming that she's going to be bringing people from outside of Pueblo, probably mostly from New Mexico and Texas and Arizona. And uh, Charlene Sims has uh, written several books regarding this topic. So it's, it's a very uh, important, I think. Although this is the first time I've seen it, uh, I didn't realize that tonight I was going to be defending them. Uh, but I, I'm glad to do it only because I know about them and, and the work that they do. Uh, they're strictly a nonprofit organization. They pay nobody. They have no executive director. So none of this money is going to go toward the payment of anything. I'm assuming uh, that they've got to pay a rental fee at the university. They probably have uh, you know, snacks during the, the conference. Uh, and that's about all I can say about that.
When is the conference?
Pardon me?
When is the conference date?
Um, September twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. In September.
I just wish you had a little bit more information to be honest with you. Any other comments? Let's call for the vote. Passes four two. Ma- Madam Clerk, Q two.
Item Q two, a resolution authorizing payment from the Council Contingencies Account in the twenty twenty-four General Fund Budget to Benevolent Endowment Fund of Pueblo Elks Lodge, number ninety, in the amount of two thousand dollars to sponsor the Elks Brotherhood Night at B O P E number ninety, Pueblo Ballroom on Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four at five PM.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a staff report?
Yes, sir. Again, two thousand dollars sponsored the Elks Brotherhood Night at BPOE number ninety, Pueblo Ballroom on Saturday, August tenth. Two thousand dollars actually goes to um, help support local veterans with employment, homelessness, housing, educational support, as well as military families, which we do have a lot here in Pueblo that people forget that we have active duty families here. Um, this has not been sponsored in the past, so this would be the first time.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Martinez?
Like always, I read the agenda and the attachments and I want to say thank you too much to Boston for bringing this forward. And this is a good group, how Mr. McCain said, what they help do and everything, and I hope this passes six zero. Thank you.
Sarah, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Any comments? Counsel Boston?
Uh, I just, you know, think giving anything back to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for the country, especially in the small amount of two thousand dollars is well worth it.
Anybody else? Let's call for the vote. Passes five one. Madam Clerk, let's go to ordinances, final presentation, item R one.
Item R one, an ordinance changing the street name of Vision Hills Parkway to Carl Sitter Parkway, introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Counsel Regina Meister.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a staff report? Mr. Hobson?
Good evening, President Aleph, council members. And Mayor, Mayor Graham, uh, the city is requesting to change the name of Vision Hills Parkway to Carl Sitter Parkway. Uh, the section of roadway is located east of Jerry Murphy Road and north of Walking Stick Golf Course. Um, the city is requesting to change or do the street name change in tandem with two other name changes to honor Pueblo's home of heroes history by naming additional streets around the town with Medal of Honor recipients' names. These new street names will complement the existing streets, Jerry Murphy and Drew Dix, uh, all which have uh, their street signs outfitted with a new Medal of Honor sign that references the war uh, the veteran is being honored for. Uh, Carl Sitter was a Marine Corps officer and Medal of Honor recipient during the Korean War, who grew up in Pueblo and attended Central High School in the nineteen thirties. Vision Hills Parkway is proposed uh, to be renamed to Carl Sitter Parkway and extends uh, up to the North, uh, North Vista Highlands filing number one subdivision. Uh, there are no properties that are currently addressed on this street. And so there are no street address changes for any of those properties that would be uh, required with this change. Um, therefore, there are no financial impacts to the city. And I brought with me um, sample of what the top of the sign would be. This is uh, would be for a veteran that would be for Korean War. And so the topper would be um, either World War II, Korean War, Vietnam War. And then uh, there's two other street name changes we're going to get to in just a minute, and one of those will be for a civil war. Um, so that concludes my report. And I would happy you have to take any questions. Uh, President Aleph's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number uh, SNC twenty-four oh one, dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, be made part of the record for this hearing.
So ordered. Thank you for that report. I want to remind everybody that this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Mr. Martinez? Mister Martinez?
Elvis Martinez, and of course, I, I'm for this one and the rest, but just a couple of questions on this for Mister Hobson. It, because I don't understand it. Okay, how could you name it like a Parkway, Road, Street, Avenue? What's the definition of when we do all of that? And then also, I don't know if this would fall on the mayor or, or city staff or whoever with these, uh, names and everything, wh- with the road, streets and parkways. Are we able to reach out to any of the relatives that are, are alive, like a, a great grandson or great niece or anything like this, so they could be there for the unveiling once, once it's put up and everything with technology now these days, Facebook and other social media and everything. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions?
I have one question.
Uh, Counselor Flores?
Uh, as you know, uh, the, they're renovating the old Sangre de Cristo apartment complex, uh, that's off a prairie. Two of the streets within that development was Sitter and Crawford. Uh, there were, there were two existing streets. I'm assuming that they've given those up and are gonna be naming those streets something differently.
Uh, yes, there's a different, uh, street names that are gonna be uh, assigned within, uh, the Sangre de Cristo apartment area once those areas are re-subdivided, and, uh, they're gonna be more, uh, associated with, uh, tribal nations, just like the main street, so that it's gonna have a different theme than the Medal of Honor.
So this is good timing, uh?
Right, so that was one of the reasons why we were looking at other locations uh, for prominent roads that could be renamed for the Medal of Honor.
Thanks for that clarification.
Counselor Gomez?
I just wanted to agree, uh, with, uh, Councilman Flores. I think it's appropriate indigenous name for that area. It's, I've gone through that area and the streets have all changed.
Why are they parkways or avenues or drives?
It's, uh, determined by primarily the, the standard of the design of the street and the type of design. For example, Vision Hills is set up to have in some sections a center median, so it's more of a Parkway design. Uh, where other streets that might be collector level or even arterial level streets that wouldn't have like a median would be more of a boulevard. Lesser classification like a collector level street would be more of an avenue. Usually, local roadways are streets.
Thank you for that. Uh, and is there gonna be any family that comes for the celebration of naming the streets?
Um, they've had, I think, uh, one dedication so far, and I have not been involved with that. It's been the Public Works Department and, uh, the mayor's office that's, uh, organized those, but I think they have, and maybe I can uh, get better clarification, but they have reached out to, uh, members of the families and they've had, uh, dedications and for when, uh, the honor, uh, the, the placards are placed on the streets.
Perfect. Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R two.
Item R two, an ordinance changing the street name of Tobias T Avenue to William Crawford Avenue, introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Meistree.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mister Hobson, a staff report?
Yes, President Ale, uh, this is gonna be a little bit more abbreviated because it's the same, uh, type of naming as we did in the last ordinance. This, uh, the city's requesting to change the name of Tobias T Avenue to William Crawford Avenue, and this is, uh, a, uh, north-south direction street that's located east of Walking Stick Boulevard and north of the Walking Stick Golf Course. William J Crawford was a Pueblo-born U S Army soldier and Medal of Honor recipient during World War II. This proposed street is within parcel J of the North Vista Highlands filing number one, located east of Antonito Way and extending north from Vision Hills Parkway. No properties are currently addressed on this street, so we don't anticipate any kind of changes in addresses as a, as a result of this, uh, name change. Um, that concludes my report. Mister President, President Ale of Staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S N C twenty-four oh two dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four be made part of the record of this hearing, and I'm, I want to also note that, uh, the, uh, street name change was, uh, recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on a seven-zero vote.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R three.
Item R three, an ordinance changing the street name of Dockham Road to Warren Dockham Road, introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Meistree.
And Mister Hobson, we have another staff report?
President Ale, uh, the city's requesting to change the name of Dockham Road to Warren Dockham Road, generally located east. Um, uh, this is actually, uh, east of the new Pueblo County Detention Center. The road was planted in the subdivision that was recently approved, and they used the name of Dockham Road so that to be consistent with the other, uh, Medal of Honor, uh, road names, they've added the first name of Mister Dockham to his Warren Dockham Road. And Warren Dockham was a Union Army soldier and received a Medal of Honor in the Civil War. He is currently buried in Roseland Cemetery here in Pueblo. His na- this name change is being requested so that this street name matches the conventions, basically, of the first and last name of each of the Medal of Honor winners.
True.
Um, and then again, there are no addresses that would, that are addressed off of Dockham Road, so there won't be any financial impacts or any, uh, businesses or anything that would have to change their address as a result of this name change. That concludes my report. President Ale's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S N C twenty-four oh three dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four be made part of the record for this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Counselor Flores? Uh, Counselor Gomez?
This is a civil war, uh, recipient, correct?
Yes, it is, and I guess the county did the research on that when they were doing the detention center and, um, we weren't aware of that, but they, when they platted the new detention center, they wanted to name.
What's the cost of, of adding that name, William, to the, the chain? What, what'd that cost, you know?
I, I don't have an exact number, but I don't think it would be significant in, and it would be, it's only one segment of street that is uh, extends to the south of, uh, Medal, Medal of Honor, uh, the new road that's being built, uh, to access. It would be one short section to the south, so it probably would end up being one sign that would have to be adjusted.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R four.
Item R four, an ordinance submitting zoning restrictions to rezone one point seven four acres from P U D Pike's Peak Park Planned Unit Development District to S one governmental use district, generally located east of North Pueblo Boulevard and north of West Twenty-Four Street, introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Meistree.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mister Hobson, you have another staff report?
Yes, President Ale, um, City of Pueblo is requesting to rezone one point seven four acres of land at thirty-two oh five West Twenty-Four Street to an S one governmental zone district, um, from a planned unit development zone district. Uh, this is, uh, rezoning, uh, is being requested in order to construct Fire Station Number Eleven, which is one of the new, three new fire stations. Uh, this one was, will be built to serve Western Pueblo. Uh, the property is currently zoned in the Pike's Peak Park Planned Unit Development, which is envisioned to become a mixed-use and mixed-income community. City of Pueblo is requesting to rezone uh, the property to facilitate the construction of new Fire Station Eleven. The lot is adjacent to the developing Pike's Peak Park, P U D, and the existing West Valley Estate subdivision. Its location will allow for new, the new station to serve West Pueblo area as these developments continue. The S one zone district is intended to retain and provide land for areas that are held, used, and controlled for governmental uses and purposes, uh, for um, departments and for branches of government. Uh, it's pretty much a, a district that accommodates public facilities. That concludes my report. President Ale's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z twenty-four oh five dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-four be made part of the record for this hearing. And then, uh, also I want to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended approval of this rezoning by a vote of seven-zero. That, that concludes my report.
So ordered. Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Gomez made a second. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R five.
Item R five, an ordinance approving the grant agreement between the City of Pueblo and Caring for Colorado Foundation for the DOTS program and acceptance of seventy-five hundred dollars for Project P S twenty-four oh one and authorizing the mayor to execute same, introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Meistree.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chief Huber, you have a staff report?
Good evening, President Ale. If, we are accepting a grant with the Caring for Colorado Foundation. This is a, an additional grant of seventy-five hundred dollars, and it will allow the Directing Others to Services program to put ramps in the community with our community partners, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, Counselor Latino? Any comments, questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, we go to R six.
Item R six, an ordinance to close out Project P S T twenty-two oh two and transfer all remaining funds in the Pacific Public Safety Sales Tax, P S S T Fund Operating Budget. So these funds can be used by the Public Police Department to outfit other vehicles and fund other public safety projects. Introduced July eighth, twenty twenty-four by Council Regina Meistree.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Chief Knoller, do you have a staff report?
I do, sir. Uh, Council President, members of council, Madam Mayor, um, this is an ordinance requesting to take funds that are remaining in P I, in Project P S T twenty-two oh two. Uh, those funds came out of the P S T or the Public Safety Sales Tax, uh, uh, account. Were put into that project for the purpose of buying thirteen, uh, Mustang Mach-Es, electric vehicles. Um, there's a, currently after the purchase of, of the vehicles out of that project, there's two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars left in that account. The way that project is written, we can only use that money to purchase E V vehicles. We need that money in order to outfit other vehicles, and by outfitting, I mean putting in cages, uh, the, the barriers that, that protect the officer from the, the arrestee, the, uh, police lights and other things like that, as we have, uh, purchased C S O car, cars that we need to outfit, um, in, in other vehicles that we're trying to outfit in different ways. This ordinance would allow us to transfer that money out of that project back into the P S T budget and expend those items to purchase and outfit the vehicles a- as I request. Um, and that's staff's report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, uh, questions? I mean, I, I have, I'm starting to stutter. I have questions. Uh, so it's my understanding that nobody in the police department likes E V vehicles. So why are we buying E V ve- vehicles? And you, you mentioned that that you had to buy E V V? Electric vehicles with the money? Where'd the money come from?
Okay, all right, first question, the first question, I didn't know if there was a third. Uh, the, the first question is, no, we don't like the E V vehicles, uh, for a variety of reasons. There are some roles where they maybe, maybe they're okay, like admin roles, um, but they're still, they're still not really ready for prime time, as it were, for patrol vehicles. Um, so yeah, we would like to start phasing those out of our, out of our fleet. Um, in twenty-two, uh, the direction that we were given a- at the time by the, by that administration was that we would be buying E V vehicles. Um, so that's what we did. That money was placed into a, uh, project, uh, twenty-two oh two, a P S T twenty-two oh two for the sole purpose of purchasing E V vehicles. We did. I, I can't remember if we ended up buying twelve or thirteen, but we ended up with a little over two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars remaining in that account. We are not trying to buy E V vehicles or any E V related stuff with that money, but in that project, that's the only thing I can spend it on. So what I need to do is transfer, it's, it's merely a transfer from a project back into our P S T budget, which is where the money originated from. So then, once it's in there, I can put it in a line item, and I, I, I have to admit some ignorance on which line item, but it'll allow us to put, uh, you know, uh, overhead lights, uh, computer mounts, those kind of things in cars that we are upfitting. Uh, for example, our impact team, uh, C S Os, the, the community service officers. We traded one electric vehicle for a P I U, Police Interceptor Unit, that was, uh, used by Andrew Hayes. So we need to outfit that vehicle with like a modem, lights, uh, the divider, uh, computer mounts, radios, that kind of thing, and this money in this current project, because of the way the project was written, we can't use that money for that purpose while it's in that project. Transferring it back into the P S T general operating budget will allow us to expend the money that way.
So you're not buying cars?
No, sir, not with this money.
And why would Andrew Hayes be driving a police interceptor?
You know, we, there, I, I don't know for sure. I, I didn't, I didn't authorize his approval or his purchase of the P I U. But, but they get them for, we, we get those, uh, the, the government gets those for a pretty low, a li- pretty low price. So it was probably cheaper than buying a normal Explorer, would be my guess.
It didn't have lights?
No, no, it doesn't have, it has amber light, I think, that he was using, but, uh, it doesn't have the red and blues.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there any other questions?
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Boston?
Uh, so you have twelve more remaining, approximately, E Vs?
Uh, we've got more than that. We've got nine, uh, Ford Lightning pickup trucks. We'll have maybe eight now. Um, we've traded one for the P I U, and then we, I think, have, uh, uh, twelve of the Mustang Mach-Es. Um, I think that's all we have. Uh, um, my deputy chief, uh, uh, that oversees that is, is not handy to ask, but I think that's the number of E Vs we have in the fleet. It'd be about twenty, twenty-one.
Do you plan to phase those out?
We do. Uh, I mean, unless technology changes and we're given different direction, we, we want to go back to a gasoline-powered engine. Um, I believe in the role that we serve in the community, if there was some catastrophic event related to power, um, it, it is going to be almost impossible for us to run our fleet off of an electric, the way it is today. Technology changes, uh, maybe that changes in the future and it makes a little bit more sense. Um, but I, I think there's maybe an opportunity, and I don't want to speak for other departments, but there may be an opportunity in other less critical roles that, that those E V vehicles make sense. Um, the other issue we have with the E V vehicles is there- The other issue we have with the EV vehicles is they are too small to utilize. The Mustang Mach-Es are too small to utilize as patrol cars. They're very hard for some of our officers to get in and out of because they're so low to the ground. And I'm not talking about big guys, I'm talking smaller guys too. There's also not the ability to put the divider in those vehicles so that we can transport arrestees in a way that's safe for our, our patrol officers and for the, and for the arrestee. So in their current configuration, I would not recommend to, to move to a, a all-EV patrol fleet.
Yeah, I drive one, I wouldn't recommend it either. I was just wondering about possibilities for repurposing, but it seems like you're already kind of looking into that because I know the resale market isn't always great on those.
We are, and, and we've also put them, the vehicles that we have in less critical roles. We are giving two of the Ford F-150 Lightning trucks to our dice team so that they can utilize them because a lot of times they're, they're moving up a, a lot of stuff around that, that is not owned by them. In the, in the bed of a truck would be, would be helpful. In the future, as we move forward, I would, I would like to move to like an F-150 or an F-250-style vehicle for them. But we just don't have the money to just say we're done and, and get rid of all of these and, and move on. So we're, we're doing what we can to, to farm them out where we can and be responsible about where we're using them so that we can respond in critical incidents.
Maybe Andrew wants one.
I actually gave him one, that's how I got the PIU.
Counselor Gomez?
Just seems to be a real effort to keep on jamming these electric vehicles down our throats. And unless we can talk to bad guys and the driving EVs, I'm with you.
Anybody else?
Out of curiosity, after you equipped that car, how many hours did you actually get out of it? Because we talked about that when you first bought them, because I, I asked you, how many, how many hours do you get out of the driving? Or maybe it was miles and you said 100.
Out of the charge?
Yeah.
You know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what they're experiencing with the marked ones that we have out in the fleet. Currently, our traffic sergeant has a Mach-E and we have several of, I want to say like six or seven of them for our patrol sergeants. And I have not, I, I have to admit, I have not kept tabs on, on with the overheads and all the other current draw that's happening, what kind of, what kind of battery life they're experiencing. What I will tell you is I had a F-150 Lightning for about two months. And I drive to Denver during the legislative session a, a number of times. I don't even know how many times during the legislative session. And, and I, that's when I finally realized that, that the, the truck wasn't going to be practical for me and it had the extended life battery. I could get to Denver, I could do the thing in Denver. If I was lucky, I could find a charger to charge while I was in the legislative session. But if I didn't, I would have to stop in Castle Rock or North Springs to do a rapid charge to get the rest of the way home. And a lot of times I didn't get out of Denver until 1:00 in the morning and I just didn't want to, I didn't want to have to wait around another 30, 45 minutes to charge my car.
Alrighty, thank you.
Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R7?
Item R7, an ordinance establishing project account CI2443, Admin Offices Relocation Project, transferring, budgeting, and appropriating funds from project account CI2426, City Council and Department Relocation Project, amount of $2 million into project account CI2443, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract to buy and sell real estate by and between the City of Colorado, Colorado Municipal Corporation, CK Investments, a Colorado Limited Liability Company, for the purchase of property legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, Kessler Subdivision within the State of Pueblo. Introduced July 8, 2024 by Counsel Regina Maestri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hayes, you have a staff report?
Mr. President, Members of Council, the ordinance before you approves a, a contract to buy the property at 650 Ditmer. This is a, just approximately 10,000 square foot property that will ultimately be used to house the Law Department, HR, and Civil Service. It's going to require a little bit of work inside to get it ready. It's currently a medical office with operating rooms and recovery rooms, other facilities in there that will have to be converted into municipal office space. So the total project budget that's set aside there is for 2 million. The contract to purchase is for 1.3 million. It includes an option or ability for the city to lease space back from the current owner prior to closing. The closing date is scheduled for September 27th or sooner. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you for that report. This, this is a hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Counsel Flores? No questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R8?
Item R8, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subdivision, participation, and release form with respect to the National Opioid Settlement reached with the Kroger Company, introduced July 8, 2024 by Counsel Regina Maestri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report?
Thank you, President Ailif, Members of Council, Mayor. This is a, the opioid settlement, we've had a couple of these come before, council before. This is a national settlement. States participated in this action against the major manufacturer of the opioids. And they've been settling with the defendants individually. You signed or agreed to participate in settlements back in 2023 with four of the major manufacturers. Kroger is another one, and this is a new settlement. These funds come to the city, a portion, our portion of it. And then these settlement funds can be used to fund certain projects within the community that are directly related to opioids. So this is just asking for your permission to participate in that settlement. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez? Second by Counsel Flores. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes six zero. Madam Clerk, R9?
Item R9, an ordinance submitting Section 10, Chapter 4 of Title VI of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to the residency requirement for certain unclassified employees, introduced July 8, 2024 by Counsel Regina Maestri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sykes, we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, an ordinance, if you recall back in 2016, City Council passed an ordinance that mandated that all city directors and managers had to live within the city limits of Pueblo to hold that position. Since that time, there's been some struggles finding candidates for those positions, in part due to the residency requirement. And so this is an ordinance that would amend that, that would require all directors and managers to live within Pueblo County. So it expands that to Pueblo County, hoping to draw a bigger pool of applicants for certain jobs. And that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Let me add to that, I did, as part of my research for this, ordinance did look at a lot of different cities. I looked at Wheat Ridge, Broomfield, Gunnison, Cortez, Greeley, Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, Denver. Of those, generally, the only director that was required to live within the city was the city manager. Most of the other directors didn't. There were some, some that did, but those are mostly public safety-related. But in general, it was restricted to the city manager. So this would be in line with other cities that are similar to us. And that concludes my staff.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel Flores. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes five one.
President Ailif, I will be excusing myself at this point.
Thank you, Counsel Flores. Counsel Flores has a conflict of interest and he has asked to be excused and he, it is granted. We'll wait for Counsel Flores to clear the the room. Madam Clerk, we go to item T, Communications, item T1.
Item T1, it says, "And filed an ethics complaint against Counselor Dennis Flores."
Ms. Sykes, we have a staff report?
Yes. Mr. President, Members of Council, Mayor, this was an ethics complaint that was brought by Chris Nichols filed with the City Clerk's Office on June 21st of this year. This complaint alleges to, to violations of ethics. The first is that Counselor Flores, in the selection of Charles Hernandez to replace Mayor Graham in her seat, failed to disclose that he had a relationship with Mr. Hernandez during that selection process. And so under our code, there is a requirement that if you have a relationship, someone is a member of your family in a transaction that comes before council, you should disclose it. Under the definition of family in our code, it restricts that to essentially your immediate family, parents, siblings, children, spouses, and it extends it to first cousins. On the face of this complaint, Mr. Nichols doesn't allege any specific relationship other than that there was a relationship. Subsequent to getting this complaint, Counselor Flores did tell me that he is related to Mr. Hernandez by marriage. Mr. Hernandez is his late wife's second cousin. The definition of family under our code only extends to first cousins. So this would not be a, a claim under our ethics code. So it fails to state a claim under that complaint based upon that definition. The second complaint that he alleges is that he was denied an equal opportunity to, based upon a religious bias that Counselor Flores had against him. And that is by his participation in a group called Forging Pueblo, here in, in the City of Pueblo. The section that he relies on for this is Section 617 of the Pueblo Municipal Code, which relates to equal opportunity for employment. That is specific to our civil service process and is specific to employees under our code. City council members pursuant to our charter are not employees of the city, they are officers of the city. So that section of the code does not specifically, does not apply to city council members. And so on the face of this complaint, it does not state a claim for violation of it, of the ethics code. I would also note that I, under Forging Pueblo, Forging Pueblo is a political committee as it's registered under the City of Pueblo. So it is registered with the City Clerk's Office as a political committee. It accepts contributions and, and gives donations as part of the political process. So as that, it would not fall within a protected class anyway, as race, gender, age, those traditional classes. And so based upon that, it doesn't state a claim under our ethics code either. So for those reasons, that's, that's my opinion, that it does not state a claim. The council has an option today. They can find that it doesn't state a claim and reject the, the complaint. Or they can vote to have an, do an investigation of the complaint and investigate the allegations. So that are your, that's your choices tonight. If you wanted to do an investigation, then typically that would be done through a third party. We hire outside attorneys typically to do investigations of this nature. So that would again be up to council to determine. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that report. So I need a motion to accept the communication. Is there a motion to accept the communication?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. Can we call for that action? That passes five zero. Now we can open it up to if there's a motion to dismiss, a motion to, to do whatever and to talk about it, whatever.
I'm going to make a motion to dismiss.
So we have a motion to dismiss. Is there a second to that? We have a motion and a second. Now we can open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Counselor Gomez?
Are we aware of anybody else that's come forward besides one gentleman's opinion, word against another councilman's, or a former council and a current council? We only have two people that have, basically, one, one has his version and he has his version. We have no other people involved, correct?
There, there are no other people involved on, on this complaint as far as the conversation, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not aware of anybody.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Counselor Maestri?
I have a comment. You know, on the interview process, I directly asked Mr. Nichols if anyone, if, you know, described his relationship with each member on council and if he felt that anyone needed to recuse themselves from their vote. And he didn't seem to have a problem with Mr. Flores at that time. And so I think that needs to be considered because he came with an ethics complaint after that and he had the perfect opportunity to explain his situation in regards to the conversation between himself and Mr. Flores and even in regards to, I don't think you're disputing whether it was a he said, she said regarding the, the conversation and Forging Pueblo, what you're stating is that even if it did take place, it is not a reason for discrimination because Forging Pueblo isn't a religion, it is a organization, political organization.
That is correct. So for the purposes of my review, I'm assuming the facts of this are correct so that this conversation took place and it took place the way that Mr. Nichols states in his complaint. Based upon that and the fact that it's a political committee, it doesn't fall within a protected class. Just because it's made up of people that are affiliated with religious organizations doesn't necessarily mean that it is a religion. So I have accepted that on its face. I would also say that I, I have looked at the video from the interview from June 13th, which was presumably after this. And, and Counselor Maestri is correct. She did ask him if he had any conflicts with anybody on council. And his statement was no. He went into, he went by each person and described his relationship with each person. But this was not raised at the time during that conversation.
Any other questions?
I don't understand what the connective she's trying to make. I mean, we also know this is an ethics complaint to her as well and from the same person we're talking about. Why we are, why are we bringing that up?
Hughes, why are we bringing up his interview? Is, because he was specifically asked the question during the interview as to whether or not he thought there was any conflicts or if he had a conflict with anybody on council. And, and so that's, I'm just bringing that up as facts for the council to consider.
I think it's confusing the issue. Simply, the question I had said, if they have people that might have been privy to that conversation, whether it's between Chris and him, that seems to be more relevant to me than this. That's all, I, I don't agree with whoever the road we're going down.
Any other questions? I get, I get how the, and I don't disagree with your, your interpretation of, of how this should be resolved. But what's concerning and what should be concerning to everybody up here, there are several political groups that represent specific segments of the community. And as a counselor or an employer or anybody else, to literally tell those people that I'm not going to support you because of your relationship with this group who you know very well is whatever, I mean, pick a group, throws the protection of discrimination right out the window. So what we're saying here is, is that city council doesn't have a process like that. Counselors are not employees. So I'm wondering if your interpretation means that we could literally discriminate against anybody as city counselors and it would be okay because they're not employees. And that seems like a slippery slope to me, to be able to make that determination. I mean, how would you respond to that?
So what I would say is that council makes statements often about stances that different groups in this community make, whether or not they believe that they're appropriate or not. Whether or not they, they believe their position and what they stand for in the community is something that they can support. So I, that's something that I commonly see this council do. And I don't know that there's anything wrong with that. If you have opinions and that you want to state them, there is an avenue for people to take if they disagree with it. That is a political avenue. Under our code, a lot of the, the ethics that we're talking about, these ethics of conflicts and be nonpartisan and be open minded are all aspirational. They are not specific ethics that are actionable per se. Only ones that are actionable per se under our ordinances are ones that have a financial benefit. So if you were to gain a financial benefit by precluding someone, regardless whether it was because of their position or who they were, then there would be something that would be actionable. But the rest are aspirational. I have looked to state statutes because our code of ethics was modeled after state statutes and I have looked to see if there's some guidance there. And there again, the opinions focus on the financial benefit that the person gets from doing a particular action. So that's how I would respond to that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counsel Gomez?
In reference to just simple cooperation, I don't see it on either side. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments? Let's call for the vote.
What was the motion again?
Dismiss. Passes 5-0. Anything else? Please, if you're looking for a pet, go to our local shelter, utilize the local rescues. If you do have a pet, please, please spay or neuter your pets and get one of those things they put in their neck to track them, a chip. It's very, very important. And have a great night and a great rest of your week. We're adjourned.
8:54.
How we missed it by 17 minutes?
That was, I checked it.
It's 17 minutes.